Call to order our annual meeting. This is our fourth and we will join us please. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our local.
Eric. Here. Ryan Miller.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Mayewski. Here. Okay, that brings us to our public forum. We're going to start with a report from Mary Burke from Marine Library. Remember, we have, we had a report earlier and Mary has been gracious enough to come back again and representing the library board and kind of update us on what's been happening and so that we can be a part of what is a very important part of our community.
Absolutely. Thank you Mayor Mayewski and council members. My name is Mary Burke and I'm the board chair of the Marine Community Library and I was here a couple of months ago and I kind of went into more history and more depth of what the library is about and today I'd just like to hit some highlights of some programming that we have offered through the future. Couple of things, what we're having this Friday is a huge event. Our library were turning six years old and this is a great milestone especially because we are a 100% volunteer-driven library. So every year that we can sustain ourselves and really expand into the communities is a win-win for us. So we're very, we're very, very proud of that. And we have a celebration of both the St. Croix National State Riverways 50th anniversary and then Marine Community Library's sixth birthday party. And our special guest is Julie Galanska. She's the new Riverway Superintendent and it's going to be very interesting. She's going to tell the tale how the St. Croix River and the Nanakagun River came together and became part of the national park. So if you have not been to any of our programming and have not met Julie, I think this is a great opportunity. We're also going to have some music events, an original song about the St. Croix River by a choir. We're going to have some awards and then the fun, fun facts about our library about how many books we've checked out and how many labor hours, et cetera. And I, I will be facilitating that. I'll keep it to 33 seconds on all those fun facts. On February 1st is our last documentary. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to be a part of our documentary series but the film is called The Most Likely to Succeed and the film examines a history of the education in the U.S. The film explores compelling new approaches that aim to revolutionize teaching as we know it. And this is the fourth year that we've had the documentary series and actually they're about human interest stories and they're very, very interesting. The facilitators Gale Knudsen from Marina and Paul Krieger from Square Lake have done a wonderful job of picking different stories that tug at the human heart and they've always brought an extra element of usually the film producer or a star from the movie who's in the audience and you can do a Q and A with them. So this is the last in the series this year and we're applying for a grant for next year and we'll have a total of hopefully five different films again for next year. We, on January 26th evening, this is our first event, we're approaching this, but we're going to have game night and it's really focused at families. So we're encouraging families and other members to come down and bring your board games or participate in one of our board games and we are offering pizza and popcorn and refreshments. We're getting our pizzas from the Scandia Pizza place up here and it is free. So bring your families to come down.
We're paying Scandia pizza but it's free to the people.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes, yes. February 3rd, we are again partnering with the McPhail Center for Music. They are coming to the Village Hall with the musical activities and this event is for toddlers to age five. And they have again come to us to partner and this was widely very popular. And we have our own Ruth Willius from Scandia. She is currently on our board and she chairs the children's programming committee. And we've also partnered with the Scandia Marine Lions in the past and if it wasn't for their support, I don't think we'd be as successful with our programming. Most of our programming does happen in the summer, so all that information's on our website. But that is February 3rd. Couple of other things worth mentioning. We had an event last fall, Lee Lynch, our local Scandia, Corpus resident author, he talked about his book Amazing Minnesota. I was a little concerned because the Village Hall was packed with people from both Scandia, Corpus, and Marine and he was a very, very interesting speaker just talking about his fun facts about Minnesota. So that was very popular. We had a fundraising event this fall. Garrison Heeler came down for the second time and really talked about some of his storytelling and really his tie into the community about the Marine Community Library and when he lived there. So that was a very magical evening. Recently, if you noticed here, in the last three weeks, we were in the Forest Lake Times and the Peach and I just want to give a call out to Hannah Davis. She did a really wonderful article and really talking about our library. Now, I was down at the library last Saturday and this young author, mother, came in and she had read the article and she was just so inspired by the article and she came in and brought me one of her new books and she had ties with the Marine Library many years ago and she was wanting to kind of see what our story was again. So, you know, it really fits our goal. We're trying to reach out into the communities and it really is a community library, not just about Marine, but we're trying to reach out to Scandia, you know, parts of Forest Lake, Maite Township, and beyond. And we're accomplishing that. Currently, we have a couple of board openings. So if you know of someone, we always like to represent board members from Scandia, from Maite Township and from Marine. If you know, currently we have two board members, but we always like to still be fully represented. We currently have two board members from Scandia, one being Christine Mayewski and Ruth Willius, but it's always nice to have other representation. So if you know of anyone, please contact Christine. We are planning here in the near future to finalize that, so you'd have to move on that. And also, you know, I want to keep this brief because we kind of went through a lot of the history before and I just want to thank you for this time this evening. I think it's important that we have the community engagement and the partnership and I think it's always very important to connect a name with a face. And our plan is to be here on a quarterly schedule, to be here to just kind of give program updates and to be available for questions. And I'd like to just thank Mayor Mayewski for being, inviting us to be here today. And just one last reminder, and you know, we are pleased if you haven't been to any of our events, I promise this Friday, our birthday party with Julie Galanska is going to be a magical evening and just really, you know, telling about the wonderful asset we live next to the St. Croix River. So with that, any questions from the council?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I would like to encourage you to, if you haven't been to a documentary night film there, it was really fun. I think Brenda could.
Sweet dancing, did you see the sweet dancing?
Okay. Washington County Veteran Services. Well, hello.
Hi. My name is Alon Pardon and I'm Assistant Washington County Veteran Service Officer and I live just down the road in Marine on St. Croix. And the purpose of my visit, and thanks very much for having me here, the purpose of my visit tonight is to let you know what the county offers for veterans. And so it's a county-wide program and one of the things that we'd like to do is reach all of the veterans and their families in Washington County. So part of what we want to do is come before councils and let you know what we do and kind of get out there in the community. We have 15,000 veterans in Washington County that doesn't include their families. So we're well represented in the state as far as county goes. Our mission statement is Washington County Veteran Services provides responsive, timely, accurate, and compassionate assistance to veterans, their dependents, and survivors in applying for federal, state, and local benefits. So there are a lot of benefits available for veterans. Not every veteran will be eligible for benefits, but what we'd like to do is kind of go through with the veteran what we have to offer. What I really hope has happened is that there's a VA home loan program for veterans, there's also school for veterans, and unfortunately, if a veteran hasn't used his school benefit by 10 years, then that disappears. So the federal benefits are the disability compensation, which is if something happened to a veteran, a hearing loss or some sort of injury while they were in service, they can apply for disability compensation. Dependency and indemnity compensation is for surviving spouses and their families. If a veteran passes from an illness or disease that they incurred while they were in the military, that's available. Veterans Pension is a, it's a means-tested program for veterans and they have burial benefits at the cemetery at Forest Lake and also VA healthcare. We have a tremendous healthcare system here in Minneapolis. We also help with military records and decorations, both rehab, the home loan I've already mentioned, education benefits I've mentioned, and disability insurance. The state also offers benefits and most of these benefits for the state are means-tested, so there are some limits as far as income goes. And so there's dental and optical assistance and these are for family and for the veterans. Special needs grants, if a veteran has a problem, they have a furnace that goes bad on them or a roof that needs repair, the state can help with that. Short-term financial assistance, if they're laid off, if they have a medical issue or something along those lines. And so those are just several of the benefits that we have and we would love for veterans to give us a call. Our number is (651) 430-6895. It puts you in a phone tree, but we try to get ahold of everyone within 24 hours. We should be able to get to them that business day. As you know, Washington County is a long county. We have three offices, Stillwater, Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:30. Forest Lake is Tuesday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. And then Cottage Grove is Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4:30. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them, but I would like to say thank you for allowing me to come here and just talk a little bit about the benefits for our military.
Thank you very much for coming. Any questions, anyone?
Do you get involved in the veterans parks that we have here?
We, not really involved other than we have some events there, but we're not involved as far as getting you signed up if you wanted to have a campsite or any of those things. But we have events and we work with the people there.
Is that what you're talking about?
The vets camp.
Are you aware of the Vets Memorial that we've been directing?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thanks much.
Okay, that brings us to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Oh, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during this time about something that is not on the agenda? Thank you. Thanks, Chris. All right, then we're on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, or else a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor? I. Approval of the consent agenda, you've all had an opportunity to look at it. Any questions or?
No, wait, I. I approve of the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor? We have no public hearings this evening. That brings us then to committee reports and our first one is for our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. Thanks for the audience. I have a couple of things that I wanted to just cover with you tonight. First of all, as it's listed on the agenda here, an update on the 2012 Winterfest event. Things are going pretty well. Most of the planning has been completed. We've been getting the word out pretty well through posters and other information around town. We have, continue with our button sales.
Oh, I know. I looked at you and thought, oh, no, I don't have mine on.
Haven't gotten, again, the local merchants. I checked at the SA today, there's still a bit of supply over there.
Oh, good. So I'm going there right after the meeting.
Okay.
To my mind.
But we're looking forward to the event. Everything's pretty well scheduled. I was contacted for one other additional fun event. Someone over at the Gamble Garden suggested a ludifist kicking contest.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
I don't know much about those.
Kick it very far.
But that might maybe a last-minute add if we can get a little extra time either on the hockey rink or else on the figure skating rink. So no unforeseen issues, let's just hope for a good hockey day, not too warm, and a nice day. And everything seems to be going pretty well.
And snow?
And snow, exactly.
Yeah, although we're in a lot better shape this year than we have in the last couple of years.
Yes, and with the snow sculpting contests, hopefully we'll be able to use what's there rather than have to go scrape some off a field someplace. Any questions on Winterfest?
Now, there is the chili cook-off at ELO? Did I read that somewhere? I don't think, I don't know if on our official. No, it's not an official Winterfest event, but.
Yeah, it could have been one of those things that kind of stuck in, kind of like this other.
Yeah, yeah, because that would be something to be aware of too.
But I haven't been contacted on that one, sorry.
All right, well, I will make contact.
Next on our agenda here is we were contacted by the St. Croix Festival Theater in June of 2017.
I'm so excited about this.
Yes. We couldn't respond to that thing. It was, it's called the Art in Action Program and what it is is for campers ages 5 through 12. It's a half-day for a week. And the intent there is to create, rehearse, and perform an original short play and do everything that comes with that. That's design, the set, any choreography, anything, that's all part of that. And actually perform their play for a live audience of family and friends. And what they have asked, by the way, they approached us last year, we didn't have time to respond. We do have time this year, obviously, and so that's what we're seeking approval for. And what the PRC is recommending is that we donate some space at the community center and offer the Art in Action Summer Program. I think you have this up in your information pack. I was looking through that. We don't have an exact date. Obviously, this is summertime, we'd have to lock in on the exact week that we do that. But we thought that was, you know, having the space there would be a good opportunity. They'll run the program for us as well as, you know, help us advertise it. There is a choir that's available out here too that we can get up on our website and that they would also be.
We've had children from South of Scandia who have taken advantage of the theater arts program they have at Festival Theater, driven up to St. Croix Falls. So I think it's wonderful that they're coming. Really, very excited.
So I guess what we would need from you is a motion to allow some space in the community center to move forward and pick a date to make.
For a week?
Yeah, it is for campers ages 5 to 12, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 12:00 p.m.
So who would they need to contact?
Well, first, can we do that?
In terms of for community group, yes. I mean, if you look at a recreational activity and that's really what it is, I mean, that's what the building's here for.
And it's being sponsored by our PRC.
Right.
Well, the reason that I ask is because we have people coming here to do stuff, but definitely those private people, so.
Right.
Okay.
So moved.
All in favor? Now, who should the contact be? Well, they should, we'll have to set it up.
Probably, the contact would probably be with Brenda because she's the keeper of the calendar.
Okay. Okay. You said you were Judy?
Because this one came, Julie prepared this one. I'll get it.
Either of us, probably on this.
Okay. And then last on my agenda here is a discussion on advertising for the skate park. We've been looking at this one as a committee probably for longer than we wish it were, but we have proposed some guidelines. The question was whether to offer businesses the opportunity to advertise at the skate park by putting signage up around the hockey rink, similar to what we have at the lighted ball field over there. And so the question that we have, we put together some guidelines. The question we have is should we do that and go forward with that, advertise on the boards at the skate park? And if so, what cost? We have proposed some costs there that's in your materials. It's $500 for three years or $200 for a year and then any additional costs associated with creating the signs. That revenue would go towards upkeep of the hockey rink over there. And so there's a few details that we have on this. We've started working on some standardization of that and I'll talk about that in a second. There's room for 45 advertisers over there. We'd start with populating on the east-facing side, so when you're looking west, most of, like for events that's coming in a couple of weeks, people are typically looking that way. But we have room for 45 advertisers all around the rink. We've looked at a couple preferred vendors and they could create the signs for us and we would have the advertisers, once we identified them, contact the city office and the city office would be responsible for keeping track of who's there and for okaying the signs. So it's any merchant would be eligible for this. Obviously, we'd like to see our local merchants as much as possible. We have contacted a few of them, you know, the logical ones around town, and there has been mixed interest, but there have been a few that could probably, you know, plant a seat and get us going. So once again, the cost was, we proposed $200 a year, which is kind of, which is close to in line for what we do over at the lighted ball field, I think that's a hundred and a half a year. Sue contacted me and I know that you've been talking to Sue a little bit too, just the other day. And so we didn't get it into the materials, but there's a, I think it's a great thought is to have these businesses work with a design person so that we can get a nice, consistent design across the rink. So colors are consistent, size of the advertising, and so it has a nice look rather than just have them design their own sign that's 35 inches by eight feet. This way, we get, part of that would be to build those costs right into this, you know, the costs we have here at 200 per year. And we think that perhaps if we had somebody that's a design person, they may have some other options for us to actually get this thing printed. And obviously, we'd have to something that'd be a model. So what we intended to do today was to recommend that we approve the guidelines and allow signage in the skate park, but based on this conversation, I think we need to do one more iteration here, is amend them with incorporating with these design services again. I think that consistent look is going to be really important over there. And then approve the recommended guidelines.
Any questions?
Yeah, you talked about vendors here, two preferred vendors. I don't see anything about any cost for vendors or anything like that, you know, as far as the installing them. You said Gator Sign uses the styrene sheets and that. I mean, is that, who's doing that or are we doing that or who's paying for it?
We, we've talked about that, that that could be our city, that would be our city staff that would be, that could help us with the installations.
And including the purchase of the materials and everything.
I think we need to button that down just a little bit more. One of the ideas that was put out there is if we did work with someone local, we'd find out for sure what are their materials, what would they expect the cost to be, and then we could get a little bit better idea. And that's where I think we need to amend this one more.
And then a silly question. You go to a wild game and all the advertising on the inside of the boards, is ours going to be on the outside of the boards?
No.
It's on the inside.
Inside, same token.
I got a question with that. The sign, the sign has a Plexiglas cover. Now, would that be thicker than the boards are now and it would have an edge on it for when you're skating along, even if it's a quarter inch or something? That be susceptible to breaking?
Well, I think it's susceptible to breaking and you don't want to have somebody impression it.
Yeah, so what would be the fix for that or what's the?
It's a great question and I think that's probably one of the, I don't have that answer. Do you by any chance?
All I know is the thickness is 1/8 inch.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, just a quick interjection, Mayor and Council. There is something on the guideline that says the ads will be approved by the city administrator. So the city administrator though would likely not want to approve the text of the ads or anything or just talk about that.
The design.
It goes with the guidelines that are mentioned here, of course, nothing, you know, explicit or profanity or anything, but just, you know, we're not approving the actual words, so just so we know on that.
We wanted to do it that way too. When you came to the PRC, you have the approval cycle to meet once a month. That could take too long to get that done. We thought if we have the guidelines clearly, you could come directly to the city office and.
I have a question. I have a bit of a concern about what the benefit is going to be versus what I see as a down, kind of a downside to it. Right now, it's, if you come down to that skating rink, it's just very simple. It's very Scandinavian. It's very Scandian. It's the lines of it, the white simplicity of it. To me, it presents a problem to think about splashing advertising signs all around. I'm not, so I want to know, on the other hand, I like the idea that we could be raising money. The question is how much money can we raise and are there other ways we could perhaps raise money, like sponsoring a hockey tournament or miniature one? Or, I mean, I think there are other things we could potentially do with the skate park itself that could earn money. That would not entail putting something up there that is going to be a permanent. And how much, so how much interest have you had? How much money do you think potentially could be raised?
The interest we had is from a couple of local restaurants where they thought that they would be willing to partake on that. Also, we talked to one of the other businesses that say, yes, they would be interested in more. We haven't been real aggressive on that one yet largely because we thought, well, let's try and see if we can get some guidelines as to how we'd want to do that. But, you know, you're talking, if it's $200 a year, that's a thousand bucks if we can get by and that probably would help with the maintenance on that rink with the, that does require work every year and some upkeep. And so even if we got to that kind of number, there would be some revenue that we don't have right now that would possibly be supported. Point well taken. There probably are other ways that we could raise some money as well. We thought that this one would kind of give it a little more feel and that they could, having that rink and having some signage up there would. One of the ways we would detract from the simplicity right now is by making sure that we have those consistent designs and making sure that it's incorporated.
That would certainly help.
Yeah. And we talked about even colors that we would use, limit the number of colors that we would have available to them and really keep that advertising.
I would personally like to see none. None at all. If we did go ahead, then that there should be guidelines that would try to keep the work to keep the Scandinavian feel of the community. I mean, we're talking about wanting to create more of a Scandinavian feel, capitalizing on what our committee has to offer as we're going forward. We've just really done conversations about this and I would hate to see this all of a sudden prematurely interrupt that, at that opportunity.
Would you like to see a little bit more, again, and what I was about to recommend was the third option was to amend it before we go back. Would you like to see some of those possible designs and then get that presented to?
I think that would help.
We can do that.
What's our budget for improvements? It's all in the part Budget, Adam, probably comment, but I mean, we have, I think for the past two or three years aggressively replaced dasher boards. I don't know how much is left to replace, but I mean, we've been spending $2,500 a year probably on dasher boards. I think we're in good shape, but Adam, you know, there may be other options, you know, things that we can do. I know this year you tried something to reduce the, get some weight in there to, you know, better reflect the sun.
Yeah, so there are other things. I think what the council needs to remember is that that is not a brand-new rink. It's a rink that came actually from Richfield. It was an indoor rink, it was installed on the outdoors. So there are other things that will slowly start deteriorating on it because it's really not made for the outdoors. It wasn't made with a lot of materials that are weather-resistant. So some of the laminations and things like that on some of the plywood's are starting to. to give away. But all the, all the dasher boards and things have been replaced, but things do break. Fences should be redone here very shortly. New poles, done with it as well. So, there's definitely going to be some needs down the road. It's not self-sustaining.
I have a question on how sturdy that eight-inch Plexiglas we used to spin up against the puck and stuff, you know, when somebody getting cut or, you know, then it got curved and, you know.
That's all we, also what we can do is if we take another look at this thing towards, we can, we were in contact, I don't remember the information yet, but some other rinks have done some of this. I don't remember it off the top of my head, sorry. But obviously, other rinks do that. We'll see if we can get a little bit more clarity into these guidelines as well.
Okay. Bye. Thank you. We'll wait till you get back.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Planning Commission report.
All right, we have two items from the Planning Commission for tonight. Both are ordinances. The first one is that the commission has been discussing adding an optional concept plan review for conditional use permits. And this came out of a permit that was heard recently that was a pretty complex request. And the applicant had to submit a lot of materials to meet the requirements, the full requirements for a submittal. And the commission felt at the end of that, that it would have been very helpful to them to have an earlier on concept plan review where things might have been looked at at an earlier stage before somebody invested a lot of money in engineering, just to get some basic comments back from the staff and commission about what was actually needed and what were the code requirements. The commission has talked about this a couple of times. Our newer member, who's a builder contractor, said he felt this would be very helpful as someone who's doing business in the world to get a concept plan review. It is optional. It's something applicants can do or not do as they wish, and it would primarily be an administrative review, so it would not add cost for applicants unless there was a need to bring the engineer or me to help with a part of it. And so, the commission has put some language together. It's in front of you in the ordinance for the pre-application concept review. It's based on the same kind of review that we do for major subdivisions, and the commission is recommending to you to approve this as an optional thing in the ordinance. Okay. Well, we had a couple of comments at the public hearing. I forgot about that. There were just some questions about the submittals. What would be the basic submittal requirements? And I think everyone felt comfortable with what those might be. And so, that was the only comment at the hearing.
I do have one question, just for clarification. It was certainly the way I read this verbiage, that this would take place prior to the official submittal, which means the 60-day clock doesn't start until after this?
Correct. That's right. So, this is number one, meaning it's the first step, and then it's followed by the official complete CUP request. So, this would be before. It wouldn't be part of the 60-day clock. I think we'd try to do it, you know, reasonably quickly, but it wouldn't have to be. And it doesn't have the same requirements for escrow or fees or anything like that. The assumption would be it primarily would be the administrator.
I really like the idea, and especially as long as we're not bound by the 60 days, this isn't interfering with that, which can sometimes be a crunch.
There's no official decision.
Exactly.
It's just comments, so it doesn't fall into that you must make a decision in 60 days deal.
That's a great idea. It used to be back when there were subdivisions in Scandia where they'd always come in first and, you know, and actually you'd have a couple of planning commissioners or maybe somebody from the council that would sit with them and just say, hey, you know, this is, and it really does simplify things, make it go a lot quicker.
Okay. I think it's a good idea, too. This is, I'm all for anything that, you know, save money for the people that are trying to start something in the community to go in here. And I know I've been involved in coming in, you know, well, we've got to do this, well, let's fly and stuff. Well, to do a full package, like you say, sometimes it just isn't, you know, conducive to that. So, this, I'm for it.
Okay. You got a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 192, amending Chapter 1, Section 8 of the Development Code related to the procedures for the review of concept plans for conditional use permits.
Second.
Okay, any of you in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll go to resolution, providing for summary publication.
We adopt resolution number 01-16, oh, 1803.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to ordinance number 193. Sherri?
Right, so this is an ordinance to permit accessory solar systems on lots on all, in all, throughout Scandia. You guys recall that we took out the solar gardens and farm part of the ordinance. That left only passive solar systems as being the systems that were allowed in Scandia. And so, the Planning Commission took on the job of looking at all kinds of accessory systems and what should be the performance standards for those if those were allowed. They, early on, discussed with you the idea about whether small community solar gardens should be part of this ordinance, and you guys recommended not. And I think the majority of the commission agreed with that, too, that there's some issues to work out before we look at solar gardens again. So, this is really focused on accessory solar energy systems that people might use to power their house or power some agricultural buildings they have on their property. It defines what the accessory use is, that it's permitted to the extent that it operates primarily to provide solar energy for the primary use and permitted accessory uses on the property where it's located. It includes a number of standards for each kind, you know, whether it's a roof-mounted system or a ground-mounted system. For example, the ground-mounted systems would be permitted up to 800 square feet in terms of footprint. If someone wanted to go beyond that, they'd need to get a conditional use permit. And that was based on some information about the typical size of a system that a typical home might need to power it, that we'd allow that. It's similar to the size of a two-car garage, that that could be permitted, but if someone wanted to get a lot larger than a CUP would be.
Yeah, we had looked at the rooftop and ground-mounted systems, and eight, they're all, and they kind of had 600, sub-800 square foot range, so that's why we put 800 as that max.
Yeah, so that seemed like it would accommodate most typical residential systems. There was a public hearing on this one. We had a few comments. Someone from U.S. Solar came and asked you to reconsider allowing solar, community solar gardens in your ordinance, and the commission had a pretty strong response for her and said, there's some issues to work out here, and we're not ready to do that yet. There was a resident who asked about the screening requirements in here and said they hoped that wouldn't be a barrier. And the commission members explained that the screening is required only in shoreland areas and in places where this would be very visible from the public roadway. So, there are a limited number of places where screening would be required, and hopefully it's not a barrier to anyone who want, who really feels they want to put one on their system. Councilmember Cronular asked about the accessory part of it and what the definition was, and so we talked through that. And then we finally had a resident who wanted to clarify that this would not allow community solar farms and gardens, and the commission was able to say, yes, this does not allow that. So, we've got the ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission in front of you to allow accessory solar systems of a variety of types in the city.
And the only, on permitting, I see it needs a building permit. Is there an administrative permit needed, or is it?
Nope, just building permit. It's like any kind of accessory structure that meets all the requirements in the ordinance, it's a building permit.
So, what generally happens is they file a building permit, and I'll look at it for, from a zoning perspective, to see whether it meets all the setbacks and size requirements, and then it'll be forwarded on to Chuck to review, so.
And you'll look at it for screening if that's required, too?
Yes.
Could you, somebody tell me what the conditional use permit, if you're allowing up to 800 square feet, if it's bigger, you need a CUP, how big can you go? I didn't get that part of it.
As long as it's only powering things, primarily powering what is on your property.
So, there's no size limit to that?
We haven't put a limit on, so.
So, some of that, I think some of that discussion came with regard to farms. You know, if you want to sit there and, you know, power your house and your barn, but generally, you may have more, you may have, may have more room to screen it. So, that's why they said CUP, so you could take that into, you know, into, as a factor in that decision. But still, the intent is to, you know, generate what you're going to use on the property and size it appropriately.
The question, the answer they gave me about primary use is like roughly, you say, 50% of what you generate, you will use, then it's, then it's primary use. So, that would limit the size.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion then?
We adopt ordinance number 193. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the resolution providing for summary publication.
Resolutions 16, 01-16-18-04, providing for summary publication of ordinance 193.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our staff report. You've seen the building report for this month, any questions about that? Do you want to say anything about it?
The, the only thing I have to add to that is just, you know, in terms of the, and I think I covered in, in my report, is that number of single-family permits. We had 22 for the year included in this number, and that was our highest number since 2005.
The average per house was 343,000.
Yes.
Yeah, pretty husky.
Pretty husky.
Yeah, I was just looking at that new development on 15, right in the Stillwater, kind of south of 96. Those houses start at $374,000, and they're right on top of each other.
The Rutherford.
The Rutherford, yes, it's right on top of them.
But that's building, when you add land into that, you're well up into the fours.
So, then Police Department report? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You have a question?
Question?
Yep.
The agenda talks about resolution 01161804.
We're moving this back up to stuff.
The document, within the document, the resolution number says 03.
We will change that.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Thank you, Chris. He's wanting, what are you doing?
Chris.
Let's get that.
I like claws.
Yeah, we would have to do it, who knows how many times. All right.
Wait a minute.
Our police report, you've seen that. Anybody have any questions about it? We have no.
We have.
Representation right, right now. Fire department then, Chief Hines?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have our report, and just some reference, last year we had 202 calls, this year we had 215. It was actually looking like we weren't going to make the 200 mark until the last two weeks of December, and it went crazy.
Makes you happy to have a caller.
So, you got three dive calls.
Yeah.
You need a real big ice auger to be able to get him to.
Nah, we use chains, that's easier. And then this, recently here, we've had, with the snow, we've had three or four snowmobile accidents, too, so that's kind of kept us busy. And as you see, the deputy left, we did have a medical call going on right now, so. But otherwise, if you have any other questions?
You're not asking for any money?
Not today.
All right.
What we want to give is some.
January.
What's a truck feminization?
Yeah, I know, that's right. What does that mean?
Did he say, what did you, what did it say?
Truck feminization.
Familiarization, not feminization.
Maybe you just.
I'll let Ian know, yes, to fix the spell check.
No, just leave me out of it.
Familiarization. Familiarization. It's just to get, you know, we've got quite a few new guys, so it's just a matter, we take everything off the trucks, make sure everyone knows where it is, what it is, where it belongs.
That's pretty funny. Okay, any questions, more questions for Mike? Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our city engineer, Ryan.
Mayor City Council, I have my report, just one addition. So, I did provide the response from Washington County in our CIP comments. So, within their CIP, they don't specifically, line by line, outline the maintenance, pavement or pavement maintenance projects, but in 2020, Manning Avenue from Highway 97 to County Road 4, 2020 planned now. So, I still want to ask them, follow up, why not to the north? But, you know, that was something that obviously was, has been responded to in our comments, so it's always good, again, to submit comments. So, you know, when you think about it by 2020, oh, a lot of nice new roads in town, you know, so. That'll be good. That's all I got.
Weird, you got a nice compliment from Commissioner Mier, by the way, for your, the time that you took to respond to the.
He's very proactive in Washington County, and he should be thought of as a strong ally for the city's game.
And he's appreciative of it.
It's good to hear, everyone's well.
We were. Okay, anything else with Ryan? Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of what I've been working on.
Oh, sorry.
You're out.
I'm right, you heard him say that.
Yes. Most of what I've been working on lately, we covered at 6 o'clock, so I won't go any further in that. Do you want to introduce my colleague in the audience, Dan Burns, who has been working with us since last April? And he's been working with Neil and myself on many things, including a small cell wireless red-away ordinance draft that will be coming before you in the coming months, and working with our other municipalities and finance projects, and allowing me to take a day off here and there, which is always nice, so. So, if there's someone, a suit in the audience, sometimes people wonder who that is, so that's, that's who it is.
Welcome. Nice to be here.
It's an ally. It's on our side.
Any questions for Andy? Okay, thanks, Andy. That'll bring us to our public works.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, you have your, my outline before you. Couple of things Neil did bring up, that we are trying something a little different this year. On the north end of the rink, we are trying some, what they call bright white, which is a product that whitens the rinks. And so far, the results, even though it's been very cold, we've had a couple of warm days, and it looks like it's working properly. It's, it's helped keeping the melting down. We're losing so much on the north end, those couple of warm days we have. The true test will be the next couple of days here at the end of the week and see how that looks, but seems to be holding up and working well. And it's inexpensive, that's the really good thing about it. Warming house, we did have a broken window, a puck hit the window, broke it. We have now replaced them with Lexan, so it's a polymer that's very tough, and that should not be happening again, at least on the doors and the other windows are screened, so we should be good there. And we have done our first burn on our brush pile for the buckthorn removal. I don't know if you've noticed or not, going by Lily Skogan, but they've done a lot of clearing for us. The Sense to Serve people have done a great job there for clearing out the buckthorn for us, so we're making great strides there. We'll probably be burning next week with our second burn for the year.
I'll fix the ice out on the rink.
Right now, it's right into that four and a half, five inch.
Oh, it is, huh?
Yep.
Has anyone discussed with you doing something to put a netting up on the corner of the rink closest to the house? Because pucks are going over the top of the fence, and that's what broke the window, I think. And that's, while I was there, there were two that came across, just in a short while.
Yes, there hasn't been any discussion of it, hasn't yet.
Yeah, and it looks like a simple fix, maybe just putting a little bit of netting that goes up a few feet. It could be jerry-rigged or something, but it would stop those pucks from going up over there into the, right into the door area of the, of the warming house, which is where it's going to hit somebody.
On the northeast corner there.
Yeah, right on this corner there. It's just a good liability, I think.
Any questions, other questions for Adam or comments? All right, that brings us to our administrator report. Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
Oh, one question. You're talking about, fun fact, brisk sales on street signs? How much are they? How much are they?
How much are they, Brenda?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars, yep.
How much?
Twenty.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars? How about it?
Made enough to maybe pay for the netting in the northeast corner.
Yeah.
Okay. Neil?
One of the things that has occurred since, and I noted in here, that Hillcrest Animal Hospital gave us their 60-day notice that they're no longer going to be a animal, they are no longer providing animal impound services. And over the weekend, we received notice from Cheryl Reed, our animal control officer, that she is getting out of the business too. She is referring the eight cities that she provides animal control services to Brittany Harmon of Companion Animal Control, and Cheryl says that she will resign once people have alternate signed contracts, hopefully with Companion. Right now, Companion does provide those services for Forest Lake and Hugo, but I, this is kind of hot off the presses to us. In terms of the fire contract with May Township, I have the information from the fire department on runs, however, I'm trying a couple sources to get the information from Stillwater as to how they get the population and valuation numbers, and they have not responded. I think I note in there, the, in terms of green step cities, we have a meeting kind of set up tomorrow with the, you know, the green step cities program, the part of MPCA, about our, our direction, and, you know, one of the things when the city, when Scandi took action, become a green step city, uh, the goal was to work out our own pace to become a step, recognize as a step three city, or a step two city, excuse me, and through items that the city has done, some of them, most of them before we became a green step city, and some of them subsequent, this year at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, we will achieve that step two recognition. I think some of the discussion tomorrow will be about what it will take to get to step three, but, and that will come back to the council, if, see if the council wants to go to that, to that extent.
Can I interject something here?
Sure.
The, uh, Philip Music from the MPCA commented on that our city's volunteer policy is absolutely the best he's ever seen. I think that's quite a compliment. Good work, you know, it's...
And that was one of those things for best practices in terms of community involvement that you, we look at, so. It's nice to hear that. Yes.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have, any questions?
I have one, particularly with the May fire contract, a thought occurred to me as we left our last meeting, since there, since May is looking at putting together all the information essentially, and they're going to describe where Stillwater's territory is, and they're going to strike where ours is, kind of by default, that, that leaves anything not defined to be the rink. I'm wondering if it might be worth putting a bug in there, or that they just go to the extent of actually clearly defining those and making sure with each community that they agree, not just the two of us.
I think it would be appropriate at some point in time, I mean, if it's split through ways, I'm really surprised, and that the county can't, you know, get that designation that, I mean, even within their records, designate a fire district.
But if May's doing the work.
Yes.
And they're doing for two to three, why don't they just put it all together and...
Provide that split, totally agree. And I think for a number of households, you know, once you have that information, then it's mattered, because, you know, from the county's information, they're, you know, they designate, you know, single-family residences, and it's count the single-family residences, and you're there.
The sum of the parts better be equal to the whole.
Okay, then, any other questions for Neil? Then I'll move us on to general business, discussion on authorizing Bolton and Mank to prepare the 2018 road improvement projects next.
Mayor City Council, in your packet is a formal request, 92, authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the 2018 street improvement project. Within there also is a figure that identify the streets that have been approved by the, recommended by the capital improvement committee, and the budget has been approved in the 2018 meeting, that, or budget that included funding also for a portion of 17 to start, some work that included to date, private utility coordination, wetland delineations, and culvert inspections, and then just other coordination with agencies. This is just a process that we've always incorporated in the steps of approving projects, so thus, we bring to you tonight, formal authorization of preparation of plans and specifications for the 2018 street improvement project. Anticipated schedule is also in that memo, very, very tight, fast schedule, so we can get bids out in appropriate time for you guys to be kind of first in the construction season. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of unique things with this project, with the area that we're all touching, you know, we'll have to have very strict restrictions in the contracts related to the Fat Cat Triathlon and their use of the property, Taco Days, and in coordination with the two large Washington County projects in the area as well, so, all those things are known, and will be planned for accordingly, so. With that, I'll open any other questions you guys may have with the project, or otherwise, we look for the formal authorization tonight.
Is this similar to the timeline last year, or is it later? Did we get the bids out earlier?
This is actually earlier.
It is earlier, okay.
So efficient this year. We are so efficient this year.
There you go.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan, then is there a motion authorized?
I move that we authorize Bolton, Mank to prepare the plans and specs for the 2018 road improvement project.
Now, what is the resolution calling for a public hearing?
That's the next agenda.
Okay, that's not related to this. Okay, is there a second then?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then the next is a public hearing on street reconstruction and by two and a...
So it is tangentially related, Andy, if you want to address what the need is?
Yeah, so, Adam 9B Mayor Council is, a resolution calling for a public hearing at your next meeting, and so you're going to February, I think, 20th, whatever the date is in February, the street reconstruction and by two in this overlay plan, in order to issue general obligations, street reconstruction bonds, and the number that was listed before in previous meetings was 4.4 million. In order to issue those bonds, the city council needs to hold a public hearing on the street reconstruction plan, and so you have a plan of streets in the city that are going to be reconstructed over a period of five years, of course, this tackles the first year, and a public hearing is held at that time, and then you go on down the list, and in the, in your packets is the schedule that Northland Securities put together for the actual holding bond sale, and when the money's available, et cetera. So the first step in that process is to adopt this resolution in 9B, to authorize city staff to place the notice of public hearing in the newspaper for publication, to meet the timelines for getting it on your February 20th agenda, and that's really all it is, and Exhibit A is sort of a form of what that public notice is going to look like.
So this just discusses the fact that we need to issue bonds, it doesn't get into the kind of detail that Ryan's needs in the previous?
Well, it's tangentially related in that it's going to provide your revenue, you're the main source of your revenue for funding this project, and, so then, so that's why the, the public hearing is triggered, then.
We don't need his information to hold the seat meeting?
No.
Okay.
You know, I think the other thing is, you know, with Northland, we've worked on the timeline, and the reason for the timeline is closing on the bonds, we have a council meeting on June 20th, and the feeling is that probably, with the award of the work, some work would start in May, and likely, the first payment request we would see in June, and would be up for approval at the June 20th city council meeting, so that's why we were looking for a June 19th closing date on the bonds.
Do we have a fixed rate to hold till then, or is it floating until closed?
They will, they actually said, uh, we'll send out, you know, requests, we'll have a request for ratings, and then what they will do is they will price it, uh, once, you know, we get that rating.
Okay.
From, I'm not sure whether they use Moody's or Standard and Poor's.
Right.
But it's been a long time since the city's been rated.
Yeah.
How long is the bond's going to be for?
20 years.
20, all right. And can they be retired early?
Typically, typically an eight-year period. I keep prattling on about the tax bill and everything, and so one of the things that you can't do is retire them early, early, like, like if you wanted to do a five-year, and then you pay it off that early, you have to wait till eight or nine years into it, so.
And would that, that would say the same for any kind of, you know, refunding of it, or calling?
Yeah. Yep.
Great, then is there a motion on resolution number 01?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution number 01-06-18-05 for the hearing, for public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings up the agreement with Graybar Electric for LED lighting improvements here in the community building.
This, uh, we've had this in our capital improvement plan, and, uh, the, and what this would provide for is the purchase of the fixtures and installation, uh, and through Graybar Electric. Graybar Electric is the, we would be using a, it's actually a contract that was publicly bid by Los Angeles County through the U.S. Communities Program, uh, and U.S. Communities, you know, it's, you know, like, you know, you'll see their references to them on the LEED's website. I included there the actual copy of the biz, you can see kind of the, the percentage discount that through a nationally bid contract, what you can realize.
That was good.
The, you know, the payback here is not as strong as, you know, a lot of times you see LED conversion projects that are two, three-year paybacks, it is not as strong here, simply because the number of lamps and the community building side, however, if you're looking at electrical payback, you know, one set of lights goes out, and you have an electrician here with ladders and all that, so, I mean, where it calls for about an eight-year payback, when you look at maintenance savings, it will probably be significantly greater, because once these are up, they probably won't have to be paid for 20 years. In terms of repayment, I think I, you know, I addressed that in the cover memo, the, in our 18 budget, we planned on, you know, if you look at it, one of the things that was great, working with Graybar, is they did all the work for the incentives from Exile Energy, so that took the cost down to about $28,000, which is nice, uh, and the reason I'm, you know, trying to do this as early as we can in the year, is what we've done with the budget, is for the budget for the community building, the thought is that any electrical savings over what we used last year, those funds will be repaid to the capital project, capital improvement fund, so essentially, the capital improvement fund is, you know, giving the, the general fund kind of a eight-year loan.
Questions for Ryan?
Yeah, um, and here you've got, you're down on, you've got the utility rebate, and then final cost, and then also down below, we have, talking about financing at 3.9%.
We would not be financing.
Okay, we pay it off, right?
Paying off, paying cash, yes. They, they offer that, but, you know, we have the money in our capital improvement plan, we have a plan to repay it.
It saves about $3,500 bucks.
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
Thanks for asking.
I was a little concerned about the payback here, so I'm glad you addressed the maintenance side of it.
Any other questions for Neil? Okay, then it's discussion on TKDA rate schedule, 2018 rate schedule?
Do we need a motion on the lighting?
Yes.
Oh, we do. It says discussion, it doesn't say...
Well, I don't have an, an action item that's to discuss, but I would like a motion that we can proceed with great contract.
I move we approve the agreement with Graybar Electric for LED light improvement.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, discussion on TKDA 2018 rate schedule.
This is the annual, or annual increase from TKDA, it's, you know, we've done this in the past couple of years, you can see that the, you know, the top range for senior planner, which I assume is Sherry, is, you know, for their pay range goes up $4 an hour. One of the things that...
Mine is not, however.
Yours does not. This is just their pay, their rate schedule for the range.
Right.
Why doesn't yours?
The letter actually says, we're not asking for an increase in my rate for next year. And, and you are benefiting from a couple of things, one is that our health insurance costs have actually gone down significantly, we're self-insured, and because of the Affordable Care Act and the impact it's had on rates, part of my cost is actually going down, because our insurance costs are going down, and people have been very healthy at TKDA, so, so you're benefiting from that, and then I, my rate is, I think, around 126, I'm actually sort of pushing the top, and so, at our place, like a lot of places, senior staff get lower increases, and younger staff get higher increases on average, and they make up for that performance-wise with our bonuses. So you don't have to feel sorry for me, I'll be just fine, but they, they give, they give bigger increases to the younger staff than they do to us Graybar, which is very fair.
Yeah, one of the other things to note here is that, you know, a lot of these costs are borne by, you know, who are, by applicants that are charged back, so, you know, where we really see Sherry's time, as it even says in their cover memo, the rate per meeting remains the same, you know, and we really, you know, our, our true general fund cost for Sherry is really the work she does on ordinances, mostly.
What's the order of magnitude for the annual cost? What do we generally spend?
We have spent the past couple of years in planning services, this does not include what's been, what we've, has been billed to applicants, about $30,000 a year.
And that's always kind of at your discretion, I mean, if, if you want to do ordinances, we can do it, if you don't, you don't want to just come along. Thank you. So, do we want a motion to approve this, do we want a motion?
I think it would be a motion to approve it.
All right.
Yeah, I move we approve the TKDA 2018 rate schedule. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. You're with us, Sherry.
Thanks.
Discussion on request from the Big Marine Lake Association for a letter of support. Let's see what's in there, is the letter that we wrote for them last year.
This was a letter from last year, it, the city has done this for the past couple of years, uh, you know, and they're just requesting a similar letter of support.
Okay, any questions about that?
This group started, I'm a play, I don't know if it says it in here, almost 10 years ago now, they kind of did it on their own, they took on the milfoil and Big Marine, and they've done an excellent job controlling it, and I fully think that if we can support them, that's a great idea.
Absolutely, yeah, they, I mean, they're using cutting-edge technology, and I mean, now they've got a deal where they actually inject the, the herbicide right into the root of the plant, and if you read the letter, they've, they've gone from 38 acres down to six acres of milfoil and big marine, I mean, it's just amazing what they do.
We had a request from the Bone Lake Association, which I voted against, and I live on Bone Lake, because it was to the city, this is to the county.
Right.
So...
We're not giving them the money, we're supporting...
Yeah, one is to the county, the city, so I think it's worthwhile.
Even as property owners, we're not contributing anything to them. All right, motion for the letter of support?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Designate official newspaper. We have had, this year, our official newspaper has been the country messenger, read the background.
We need to designate a, you know, a newspaper, you know, we actually have the two applicants, so it's really, you know, the city's choice.
I would move to...
Did I, what?
Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, yeah, did I not read where they're not going to be mailing the Forest Lake paper anymore?
They're, no, you, subscription, no.
Subscription, okay, so, all right, so...
They're, just to note, they are still mailed.
Right.
Yeah.
Upon subscription.
Subscription, so it's not the freebies anymore, so.
Correct.
One of the big, just, you know, one of their big selling points, obviously, was circulation and, you know, that type of thing, so, that's been kind of neutralized.
Now, if you look at the, the one, this is based on the current circulation, the numbers that are in here now, Neil, since they started charging, it's 120... numbers that are in here now, Neil, since they started charging. It's 121, the Forest Lake tab is 469.
That's what they provided.
Yep. Country Messenger's so effective. All right, so any further discussion, if you have a motion?
I would move to appoint the Country Messenger as the official newspaper.
2018.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, two good newspapers, I want to say. I would like to, I would like to save that. And Hannah does a great job covering us, and we appreciate that very much, as does Kyle. So it's, we need to save that as well.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Acting mayor. For 2018, Jim was the acting mayor this year. We rotated.
Let me see, let me see.
I move it Steve's turn.
I nominate Steve, too.
I hear a nominate and a nominate. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
There you go.
A hundred feet away.
Thanks, Mike.
You get a big bump in your stomach.
Congratulations.
I got me. Yeah, 100% increase.
And then our final item for the evening is a summary of the results of our closed session on the city council, January 4th city council, since January 3rd, was it 3rd? We went into a closed session with the purpose of conducting an evaluation of the city administrator. The city council was unanimous in its opinion that the administrator's performance has been exemplary. Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome.
It's been a pleasure.
And that brings us to our final item, which is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Too bad.